Our candidates for the school board, and let me make sure. Let's see, I think we're still missing one. Two? Yes, there's only four, I need to count. Do you, let's see, who's up here? So it looks like we're missing Richard Kaminsky and Vicky Meyer. Are either of those candidates here? Richard Kaminsky and Vicky Meyer. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started without them. I do want to remind all of the candidates that since we only have two microphones up there, you will need to share and pass them back and forth. Our candidates for the KCK Public School Board are Tyrone Garner, Evelyn Hudson, who is an incumbent, Janie M. Humphries, Richard J. Kaminsky, absent, Vicky Meyer, who is an incumbent, absent, and Aresha M. Towers. We are going to go ahead and start with the opening statements. You will have one minute, or two minutes to make your opening statement, sorry. And Ms. Aresha Towers is going to start us out.
Good evening. My name is Aresha Towers and I am running as a candidate to be a board member for the USC 500 Kansas City, Kansas School District. If you are sitting here tonight, that means you want answers as to how we as candidates plan on making sure that our children in this district succeed academically. These children are our future, which means that they are our priority, and it is our goal as a district to make sure that they succeed. I have taught in this school district for five years, and I currently have a child that is attending school in this district as well. I also grew up in this school district. When it comes to running as a candidate for the Board of Education, there should be someone who understands what our school district needs. There should be a young person, as myself on board, who understands today's world and how it has an impact on our children, like social media. And to bring new, vibrant, innovative ideas to the members who currently serve on the Board. For example, I want to promote a culture of continuous education to help graduates excel on a college level, and to also help increase excellence in our children's education. Forty percent of our senior class within the USC 500 as a whole, within the last two years, has not graduated from high school, and I see that as a need for a call for action. It takes a village to raise one child, and I plan on being a part of that village. The Bible says, "Train up a child in the way that he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." The question is, are we training our children in this district to become successful?
Thank you, Ms. Towers. We will now have Ms. Janie Humphries give her opening statement, two minutes.
My name is Janie Humphries, and my husband, Richard, and I have lived here for over thirty-seven years. We had four children that graduated from Harmon High School, and three of our grandchildren attend schools here now. I am involved, and I have been involved, in our schools for more than thirty years. I have served on PTAs, site councils, and other school and district ride committees. I have visited every school building in our district, and because I wanted to know firsthand what was happening in our classrooms, last year, I spent more than half a day in each of our high schools and most of our middle schools. I listened to the teachers, students, and staff talk about their experiences in our schools today. I am a regular attendee at our school board meetings, and I am aware of the many challenges our schools face today. Our district has improved so much in the past twenty years, since my children were first in high school, but we must continue the improvement to ensure that every child in every school receives the education that they need to be prepared to live in the world of today and the future.
Thank you. Next, Dr. Evelyn Hudson will be giving her opening statement. Dr. Hudson, you have two minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Dr. Evelyn Hudson, and I am seeking reelection for the Board of Education. I have been in this area for over thirty years. I have two sons that have both graduated from the Kansas City, Kansas School District. I have a passion for our children, and I'm very passionate about children receiving quality education. I agree with the district's vision that one day this school district will be one of the top ten in the nation. However, I realize we need a lot of work before we get there. I have been a part of a lot of tough meetings and tough decisions with the extended fund cutting over the years, to make sure students graduate career and college-ready, to make sure not to cut extracurricular activities such as art, sports, et cetera. Make sure we did a better job of evaluating our staff, taking a look at our curriculum, our textbooks, and just making sure that we provide a safe environment for our students while they receive their education. We've still got a lot of work to do. Some stats about our school district, eighty-seven percent of our students are on free or reduced Forty-six that graduate go on to college, and fifty-four percent of our graduates earn college credits before graduating.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hudson. Next will be Mr. Tyrone Garner. Mr. Garner, you have one minute, or two minutes, sorry, I keep getting confused, two minutes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the host organizations for allowing me to share my platform, as it's an honor to be here with you today. Again, my name is Tyrone Garner, I'm running for USC 500 Board of Vacation. I'm a 1987 graduate of Wyandotte High School. I have a master's degree in human resources. I have twenty-five years of dedicated public service within this community, with over ten years of proven leadership in management. My desire to run is not just because I care about our kids, it's about my journey to help improve and ultimately save lives. This election offers me a real opportunity to assist with this effort to improve achievement gaps and the graduation rates of our students. One of my goals includes being a bridge between the community and the district, a fresh face that will bring proven leadership, vision, a commitment to our stakeholders, as well as being someone that will always vote in the best interest of our children. I truly want USC 500 to be the school district of choice for families. I applaud the current administration, past and present board members, working consistently to inspire excellence. I have a platform that I believe can aid in building upon these legacies, all with the hope that we can better demonstrate excellence in the educational quality of the young people we send into our community. My platform consists of advocating for district fiscal responsibility, maintaining a safe learning environment, improved accountability, innovative curriculum systems, increased transparency, and the equitable state funding of our schools. If elected, my board decision-making philosophies on issues will be simple. Is it in the best interest of our children, and does it offer them a real opportunity for educational success? But that's just the first step. I will stand with those that support implementing proven programs for our children and necessary resources for our teachers, focused on reading, math, science, technology, engineering, early childhood development, and I look forward to working with students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers, board members, and the administration to that end. In closing, I personally believe in the potential for our students-
Mr. Garner, your time is up.
Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you all for your introductions. I will now turn this over to the moderator for the questions.
For the challengers, why are you running for the school board? For the incumbents, why are you running for reelection? That would be you, Ms. Hudson. Mr. Garner?
I'm running because I believe this, again, this election allows us to not just look at who we are as a school district and a community, but more importantly, look at who we should be in the educational success of our children. I'm running because this offers me a real opportunity, again, to help improve the lives of our young people in this community. Also, when families look at where they want to move, one of the first places they look at is the school district. People that are here in this community also realize if the educational system isn't up to their standards, they're gonna move out of the district. So I want to help continue building on the successes that we have realized in our school district, and also look at ways that how we can improve on things that we know haven't been as effective. So for me, it's about not just running for a board position, but other to help continue improving the lives of our young people so they can contribute positively to this community.
Ms. Towers, same question.
I'm running because I have a passion to see our children grow in this school district. As an employee for the USC 500, you have an opportunity to get to work with students, and they have needs, and it's our duty as a board member to help them with their needs. The reason why I'm running also is to help promote healthy lifestyles for our children, you know, more PE for them, you know, more recess for them, you know. It is our duty to help see them succeed and to be healthy.
Next one is Ms. Humphries.
I'm running for the school board because for forty years, I've been involved in educating children. I have been attending school board meetings, I've seen the amazing changes our district has undergone the last twenty years. Our children are achieving more than they have before. We have advanced classes in our high schools that we never had before. It's, to me, it's just, the word's amazing. We have good employees who care about our teachers, or teachers that care about our students, and they're working very hard to make our children achieve the success of a life that they deserve. I am so interested in education that for four years, I've been attending the school board meetings, listening to the decisions that have had been made, the hard ones when they've had to cut budgets, looking at the data showing where our children are not achieving and where they are. I have the time and the interest to attend the school board meetings, to do the research, to understand what we are voting on, and I am there for the children.
Next is Dr. Hudson, why are you running for reelection?
I'm running for reelection. I would like to both complete and somehow ensure some of the positive things of the work that we have already begun. We are in the process of taking a look at our policies and making sure they're updated and in place, new and improved. I just want to make sure that we have an opportunity to make a positive difference for our students. One of the things I've noticed with any large system is it takes a long time to really see any positive change takes place, taking place. So I'd like to be there at least one more term, which is another four years, to see some of those things come into place that we have put forth.
Very good. So the next question will be directed first to Mr. Garner, and then to Ms. Towers. Be all four of you, but I want to give you in order so that you can prepare the microphones. I have a bit of a passion for this question, and I want you to think about it because it's been mentioned before that it takes a village to raise children, and I don't deny that. But with the diversity that we have, with the scores of cultures and languages, how would you work, or how have you worked, to get parents involved in their children's education in our schools?
Well, I think my background and my experience speaks for itself when we talk about incorporating positive, proactive community partnerships, and I think that's what it takes for the school district to be successful. And I would work to that end. Another thing that I think would benefit this is, and I'm a strong advocate, that I think that our children need more classroom time, not less. A lot of the voters that I've talked to in the community agree with that, and I stand with them in that regard. I believe we need to take a hard look at Wednesdays and get our kids back in school, and so we can continue helping them narrow these achievement gaps, improving our graduation rates, and that requires more classroom time, not less. And I think we can look at alternate ways for teacher development without taking away from the necessary time that's needed for our children to be successful. So again, just building on positive partnerships, bringing the community together. One thing that the voters can count on me to do is to be proactive. I want the voters to not just know who I am, but the board as a general. I think that they need to know who we are, and instead of us always asking the board people to come to us, I would like to see the board get out into the community and see what issues are really important to them, and work together in these partnerships to find real solutions to real problems that we know affect the real lives of our children every single day.
Thank you. Ms. Towers, and then it'll go to Ms. Humphries.
I agree with Mr. Gardner that it is our duty as a board, or if I became a board member, that we get out as a board member to connect with our community. Our community should have a say-so as to how we would like our children to be educated. I also agree with Mr. Gardner when he said that half-days of school, we need, they need, not we, but they need four days of school on Wednesdays, Monday through Friday. Half-days of school only leads to more teenage pregnancies, more violence. If we can get our kids back into the school setting Monday through Friday, all day, every day, I think that will have a great impact on our children's learning.
Ms. Humphries, and then it'll go to Dr. Hudson.
Could you repeat the question one more time?
Yes, I do. With the diversity of our school district, of our community, to include culture and language, how would you get parents involved in their children's education in our school district?
As everyone knows, the parents and the community around us are their first teachers for our children. We have them for four years before they even get into our school system. The entire community has to work together, community groups, schools, law enforcement, everyone. I've worked in the PTA for many years, and there's no one answer for community involvement and parent involvement. There are so many more options nowadays for parents to be involved in our kids' schools. We don't have to use just to send the note home. Twenty years ago, our teachers did not have phones in their classrooms, now they do. We have School Loop, which is a communication tool that students, parents, and teachers can use. We have email, we have parent nights at schools. We have to remember that we have a lot of immigrants in our community, and their cultures may be different, their idea of parent involvement may not be the same as ours. So one of my desires is to be out in the schools, like I have been in the past, talking to parents, teachers, and students, and being out at community meetings to listen to what people want.
Thank you. Dr. Hudson, please.
Your question had to do with communicating with the parents and getting parent involvement-
Parent involvement with the education in our schools.
Okay, I think that's an excellent question, and we have been battling with that same question at least the four years I've been there, and I'm sure before that. One of the things we have already decided was that it's not enough to have School Loop and website information because so many of our students don't even have internet in a home. So we realized that's not good enough. We also realized that we have over fifty languages as part of the students' language barriers, and we've been able to accommodate that. However, as far as getting more parent cooperation and involvement with the students, we are still challenged. One of the ideas we came up with was texting on the phones, but then we also discovered that phone numbers get changed and mixed up quite a bit, too. So somehow, you know, the parent has to take responsibility, but we are still challenged with that and working in that arena to improve.
All right, our next question, we will begin with Ms. Humphries, you'll be the first person. Would you support a joint youth agreement between schools and community organizations during non-school hours to allow more youth programs to be offered?
I think that anytime the schools can team up with a community group to offer programs for our children is excellent. I know there are certain steps that have to be taken for legal reasons through the school district, and any group that would like to help our children, all they have to do is make a phone call to the administration, the school board, and they take everything under consideration. They want, we want, what is best for our students.
Okay, Dr. Hudson?
Yes, we are excited for anybody who wants to sign up after this meeting, I'd love that. We welcome groups that will come in to help our students. There is protocol that must be met, but we are excited for anyone who would be willing to work with our youth.
Mr. Garner?
Again, with positive community partnerships, I personally believe that the school district facility should be open to the public. With over $300 million budget paid by the people in this community, why would we close and shut people out? Our schools belong to the students, the parents, the teachers, and the taxpayers in this community. So I'm a strong advocate for working through whatever legalities that we need to do to be able to make our facilities accessible to people in this community, especially our young people, to give them programs that can help them develop positively and contribute positively in this community. So I would advocate for that as well.
Ms. Towers?
Yes, I think that's an excellent idea. I think any type of mentor program that will help our children excel is a great idea and will benefit them in the future as well.
This next question will start with Ms. Humphries, and then we'll go to Dr. Hudson. Throughout this political forum, we've heard many times that our property taxes are too high and we need to lower them. One of the major complaints, then, is too high a property taxes. However, a major reason for people being attracted to our area is a quality education. How would you balance the need for a reasonable property tax against the needs to provide the resources for a quality education?
That's a long question. Yes, people move to areas for quality education, and our school district provides that. Sometimes we don't toot our own horn enough. Not enough people know the good things that are going on in our schools. As regards to property tax, if you have an $87,000 house, you pay less than $600 a year to help educate 20,000 students in our schools. Yes, it hurts to pay sometimes for your budget, but these kids are very important to us, and they're gonna be making decisions for our lives in ten to twenty years. We need to invest in them. Right now, we are capped out at our mill levy. There's sixty mils on your bill goes to the KCK schools, twenty of it goes to the state, thirty of it is what they call that local option budget, and we can't, we cannot tax anymore without a vote of the people. With the state cutting money, things can be tight, but our district has always been very good at not hurting our student achievement and doing the best they can with the money
Dr. Hudson, and then we'll go to Mr. Garner.
I believe the greatest resource we have in our community is our children. I don't want to be taxed any more than anyone else, but I'm willing to pay the small amount that would be attached to my own property tax bill. I'd be willing to pay it for our children. Presently, I don't have any children in the school district, both my children graduated years ago. I have several grandchildren that don't live in the area, but I still would support taxes being raised for a modest amount for the education of our youth. If we don't, if we don't fund our youth, who will? It's amazing that the state of Kansas pays over $18,000 a year for the incarcerated, and for our students, we pay less than $4,000 a year. So that's good information to know. So yes, I'd be willing, and I would challenge anyone to think of it that a way. Thank you.
Mr. Garner, and then to Ms. Towers.
Well, I'm not one that's all for raising mill levies. I think we've asked the citizens of this community for far too long to come out of their pocket to pay for the school district, and they have done so because they know the value of education. I'm not one that would vote for any type of mill levy increases or tax increases on the citizens of this community. My focus would be on the state of Kansas to do the right thing, which is a moral issue for me, and make sure that our children in this community has the funding necessary for our children to positively achieve and invest those funds in programs. So I would continue advocating the state to do the right thing and make sure those funds come here. I think with the budget that we have, I believe that there is a lot of room, if we do complete and thorough audits, for the board to look and see where there may be wasteful spending. What I would not cut is essential programs for our students, and neither would I cut the resources that our teachers need to effectively teach. But I'm not one that is all for raising mill levies here within the school district. I think we can do a better job of finding ways to cut spending, wasteful spending in the school district as a means to make up any deficits, so, and also advocating for the state to make sure that we have the funding needed for us to effectively teach our children. So that's my position.
Thank you, Mr. Towers. Thank you, Mr. Garner. Now, Ms. Towers.
Our school district is not a bad school district. Our taxpayers should have a say-so, and it's how, and should have a say-so in how they would like their children to be educated. Our children are our future, and I will be willing to support whatever we have to do in order to help our children excel, but I don't believe that raising taxes should help our children excel. For example, like Mr. Gardner said, that we, our budget, we have a budget for a reason, and we should be able to work out in our budget how we want our children to learn and what they need in order to help them grow.
All right, our next question, and Ms. Towers, you might keep the mic there, you're first up this time. One of the major complaints in the community is the high property tax rate. What do you believe needs to be done in K-12 education to prepare students to be ready for jobs in the 21st century, knowing that many of these jobs do not exist today?
I would say that we need to bring textbooks back, especially for our seniors. We have, we rely on the social media. Basically, the social media is what's teaching our children. Now, if we're going to have laptops in our school district, we need to put on our laptops textbooks. Textbooks is what teach our children how to read, how to write, how to fill out applications. We look at laptops as a source of helping educate our children when they're looking at Twitter or Facebook or, laptops are a distraction to our children. If we're gonna teach our children to excel and fill out applications and prepare them for the workforce, we need to get back into what we used to do. Textbooks, textbooks teach them how to read, write, fill out applications, how to fill, do resumes, not a laptop. Now, it's good that we're keeping them up to date on technology, but if we're going to have- to have laptops make it accessible for them to be able to do what they need to do in order to help them excel in our schools.
Ms. Humphries?
I support what our district has been aiming towards, moving towards to make sure our students graduate ready for the career or education of their choice. But what is necessary for jobs today is not what's going to be necessary for tomorrow or the future. Our children need to be very literate, word-wise, book-wise, computer-wise. They need to have the skills to continue learning from the classroom. Anyone in the workforce today tells you they are constantly learning new things for their job. If you can't read well, if you can't reason, if you can't make decisions, then you're going to have problems in the future. We must continue to see the improvement of our four-year graduation rate. That's how many students enter as a freshman and graduate in four years. Some of our students are taking longer for various reasons, medical reasons, they have to learn English, or maybe they just need a little longer. We also are requiring our students now to take the ACT exam. That is a nationally recognized test that our children can prove what they know with.
Dr. Hudson, and then Mr. Gardner.
To prepare our students for jobs in this 21st century, I believe we also need to have a literacy-rich curriculum. I believe we should both invest in technology and textbooks. I believe students need to also know how to write. I believe to just linger on what used to be is almost a hindrance because we live on a global society these days, and things are moving quite quickly. So, I think our students need to be also technology-educated and driven since that's the way of the future is more and more technology. So, I believe these are some ideas that can help our students be ready for career and college once they leave high school.
Mr. Gardner?
I believe it starts first and foremost with early childhood development and education programs. Studies across the country have shown that if we invest in that, our children are more likely to successfully complete K through 12. I think it goes from there to looking at proven programs that focus on reading, math, science, technology, engineering, as well as moving technology beyond the high school level and moving it down throughout the district. And then it goes right back to what I said. I believe that our children need more classroom time, not less, and I think a combination of focusing on these things in collaboration with our superintendent and our administrators and our teachers, I think, can really make a profound difference to help our children be able to be college-ready as well as being able to have the skills necessary to positively contribute to our community and graduate successfully.
Very good. The next question comes in actually two parts, one for challenger and one for incumbent. And we'll start with Mr. Gardner. Have you attended a USDA school, USDA 500 school board meeting in this past year? And if so, how many?
Within the last year, yes. I can't recall how many. It's not many, as many as I would have liked to have attended.
And give us your impressions.
My impression of the school board is I see that there are people that, both administration as well as board members, that have a profound desire to work together to try and improve the educational success rates of our students. Just my observation has shown that I see a lot of dedication and passion in the board members that are there, and I look forward to working with them in that regard.
Ms. Towers, same question. And then we go to Jane Humphries.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, I will. Have you attended a USDA 500 school board meeting in this past year? And how many? And what were your impressions?
I've attended three board meetings, and I really, really envy the board members that are on there. They're at a position to where I want to be. I think that they are doing a great job, and like Ms. Hudson said, it takes time in order to get our district to be where it needs to be. By me being young, I feel that there should be more young blood to give more of an insight. I'm kind of nervous, so when I'm asked questions, you know, it comes, anything comes out. I ramble a lot. But I really do envy what they're doing because it's hard work. It's very, very hard work, and I hope to be in a position to where they are or will get to. I see Ms. Willis and Ms., I love her, she wears all purple all the time. They are the ladies who I envy and would like to be one day, hopefully soon. Thank you.
Ms. Humphries?
I have been to just about every school board meeting in the last four years. The last six months, I've missed, not counting this last month with the different forums, I believe, two meetings. Some of them are very long meetings. There's a lot of explanation going on, on the test scores, how we evaluate our students. It is very hard work. And any time I've had a question that's been answered by staff or the superintendent or assistant superintendents, you have to ask if you don't understand. That's something our students need to understand also. But it's a very hard job. Education is complex. It's not easy. Like they said, you don't turn the ship around that quick. But you have to be patient, but you have to be thorough. Ask questions, make sure you understand before you make a decision, and then be able to explain to the voters who elected you why you made the decision you made.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Hudson, we know you've attended school board meetings, so we have a little different question for you. Talk about successes on the school board. What is the initiative that has happened during your term that you believe has had the most positive impact on students' success? And what was that impact?
The most, I'm just...
An initiative that had a positive impact?
An initiative that had a positive effect on the student.
Yes, and what was that positive effect?
To think of one, one is the, just the steps of excellence that we are in the process of making sure our students are participating in. It's a curriculum-based process that we're working on now. One of the successes that I have seen was a young gentleman that came in from Mexico, I think, who couldn't even speak any English at all in the eighth grade. And last year, he graduated one of the top students here in Kansy, Kansas, school district. That was just one small thing, the math relays. I haven't even been, but I'm just so excited that we do those math relays where our kids actually are in competition with math. That's exciting to me. Another thing that's really exciting is our great debate teams coming out of Sumner and several other schools. Our sports that our students are into is excellent. So, you asked me for one, and I've given you several, and I'm still on time.
Okay.
And this will be the last question.
All right. The question, as Google comes into our community and schools, how will you support this technology? We will start first with Mr. Gardner.
Well, I think Google is an awesome thing for our community. I think it offers just an unparalleled, paralleled amount of potential, not just for the community but for our school district. I support the innovation that's there, and I would be willing to work with the board, the community, our administrators, and the superintendent on trying to work with Google to see how we could integrate that potential into our district as a means to help our children improve their educational readiness and their educational success. So, I'm a strong proponent of what Google has to offer, and as a board member, if elected, I would be willing to work with the Google folks to bring innovative change and innovative technologies to our district. And I think that goes hand in hand with our laptop program and other technological systems that are in place within the school district. So, I'm a firm proponent of what Google has to offer.
Ms. Towers?
I think Google is excellent for our community. Hopefully, it will make it more easier for our students to have easy access to the Internet when it comes to doing their homework or when it comes to looking up textbooks or doing research, research on their assignments. Google is, could be very beneficial, beneficial not only for the students but for the parents as well. I know my grandmother doesn't know anything about Internet, maybe, not my, maybe by me being her granddaughter, because there's a lot of older people that's not aware of Internet. We can teach them, help them how to use the Internet. And she can help me, or not help me, but help my son or whoever's in school, help them do their homework. So, I think it will be very, very beneficial, again, I'm rambling, very beneficial for our community.
Ms. Humphries, and then Dr. Hudson.
What I consider the most exciting about Google, once all of our schools are connected, it gives us a chance to offer more advanced classes for our students. One vision I have is having more foreign languages in our high schools, that you have a limited number of foreign language teachers, a limited number of money to spend on them. If we have all the schools connected, we could have more distance learning where the teacher might be at one high school one day, but the other days, the kids could be watching them on their computers. So, they wouldn't have the teacher in their classroom every day, but they would have access to that teacher. There's so many more ways that, that I probably can't even think of that our kids can learn with the higher download speeds and the technology. It's great.
I am definitely an advocate of the Google opportunity with our schools. Lots of excitement wrapped around the very word "Google." However, there have been a lot of question marks and dollar figures attached that I would like to be able to get answered as we move forward, but I am an advocate of Google.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now time for our closing statements from our candidates. The order was determined backstage. They drew straws, so I'm going to go ahead and tell them the order, and then each candidate will have one minute to give their closing statement. First will be Dr. Hudson, then Mr. Gardner, then Ms. Towers, then Ms. Humphries. Dr. Hudson, you can begin.
Okay, thank you. We certainly would appreciate you re-electing me, Dr. Evelyn Hudson. I am presently on the school board, and like I said earlier, I have two children that have graduated from our school district. I am passionate about children being educated. I believe every child deserves a quality education, and I'm willing to do what it takes to make sure that happens. Please remember to vote for me, Dr. Evelyn Hudson. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Gardner, it's your turn.
I just ask the voters to look at me as being an agent of change. Again, I want to be a voice for parents, teachers, students, and our taxpayers. I don't believe that we can keep doing the same things or putting a different name on the same thing and, and expect different results. So, I want to be seen as an agent of change. I ask the voters to support that option of change, an option of determined leadership, committed to put taxpayers, teachers, parents, and most importantly, our children first. As we know, the Board of Education plays an important role, not just in educating our kids, but also making educational success for our children a reality. Proven leadership, a dedication to service, and a common sense approach to governance is what you will find in my option for change. Education is and will continue to be a pathway for hope and opportunity. I want to be that fresh voice. Stand with me as I stand with you to make this testament a reality. If elected, I will do my part to make a difference. I encourage you, the voters, to be that difference for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Towers, your turn.
We all know that there are issues, issues that needs to be addressed in order to make the USDA 500 school district one of the top 10 school districts in the nation. As a board member, it is their job to help set the vision and goals for the USDA 500, and it is the board's responsibility to make sure that we hold the district accountable for the results. It should be our duty as a board member to get out into the community and talk to our citizens, teachers, principals, and students so that, so that we can hear their views on how we as a board can help the students reach the goals in order to make this district one of the top 10 school districts in this nation. Again, it takes a village to raise one child, a village. It is time for us as a district to reach out to our village in order to help our future doctors, lawyers, teachers, principals, or whatever they want to be, succeed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towers. Ms. Humphries, it's now your turn.
Serving as a school board member involves more than attending two meetings a month. Education is complex, and board members must be willing to invest the time required for phone calls and school visits, to attend board trainings and community meetings. Members must be able to learn and understand the details and the needs of our schools today. I have the time and the interest to visit schools and see what is happening. I've worked with many community groups and parent groups over the years, and I believe I would bring the perspective of a parent, a grandparent, and a community member to the board. I will work with community members, staff, other board members to make the best decisions possible for our students. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight.